Lupka and I'm the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I'd like to acknowledge the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy? Ms. German? Bev, you, you need to unmute. Bev is, let's note that Ms. German is here. We just can't hear at the moment. Mr. Paver? Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Looks like he's here, but he has. There we go. Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo?
Aye.
Ms. Penaro?
Yeah.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Ms. Wolfson?
Here.
I see Ms. Brophy has joined us. I think that is everyone I see at the moment. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from the Baltimore County Public Schools and the Community College of Baltimore County. After each presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. Before we begin, I want to note that there are members of the community in attendance. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement project program. Our first presentation will be from the Baltimore County Public Schools. I'd like to invite Dr. Rogers from Baltimore County Public Schools to begin her presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jess Grimm. I'm the Chief Operating Officer. Dr. Rogers is texting me. I think she may be in the other, in the other part of the meeting. She's having some difficulty joining, so I'm going to get started and begin.
Can you check your mic? I'm not hearing you very well.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Can anyone else hear him at all?
I don't hear him well at all.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so Dr. Rogers has asked if she, if her phone can be unmuted. She might be one of the other attendees. So I'm not sure if that's possible or not.
Do you know, do you know if she's, we have a call-in user that's phone number starts with two four zero?
That is her. Yes, that is correct.
I will make her a panelist and then she'll be able to unmute herself.
Okay, wonderful.
And then you should be able to share your screen to run the slides.
Okay. Very good. She's saying that she can hear, but you guys might not be able to hear her. So if it's okay, I'll get, I'll get started if that's all right with everybody.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. So, good afternoon, Chair Hafford, Vice Chair Lupka, and members of the board. Superintendent Rogers is here with us, but as I said, my name is Jess Grimm and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Division of Operations for the Baltimore County Public Schools. With us this evening, our team, Mr. Pete Dixit, Executive Director, Department of Facilities Management and Strategic Planning, Mr. Merrill Plait, Director, Office of Facilities Construction and Improvement, and Mr. Paul Taylor, Office of Strategic Planning. I would like to thank you for supporting our capital improvement programs. Our priorities within the capital improvement program continue to focus on recommendations from the multi-year improvement plan for all schools, schools of my IPAS, as well as infrastructure improvements. Our school system also continues to move forward in creating equitable learning environments that will result in globally competitive. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Grimm, who is me, and the team to provide some additional background information and an overview of our capital. This slide shows a schedule for recently completed multi-year improvement. For the recently completed multi-year improvement. My IPAS is referred to as the guiding document for inclusion in our capital improvement. And the projects presented in this capital improvement program recommendations are based on those recommendations from my IPAS. The slide shows an inventory of our portfolio of school centers and programs within the Baltimore County Public Schools. As compared with last year's information, this includes the recently completed Rockville Elementary School, which opened in September of 2025. Please note, the other category shown here represents a school with a unique grade configuration, and that, of course, is Hollibur Middle School. That includes grades four. The next two slides with specific projects included in our request for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. I'm going to pause to give you an opportunity to look through these. You will see these again in different format throughout the presentation, just so that you can look through the list here. And on the second page. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Dixit and his team.
Are you with us, Mr. Dixit?
Yes, I saw him pop up there. There he is. Pete, we can't hear you.
Dr. Grimm, if you'd like me and Merrill Plait to to present some of these slides while we wait to see if Mr. Dixit can get on board, I'd be glad to do that.
That would be, that would be great, Mr. Plait. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Merrill Plait. I'm the Director of Facilities Construction and Improvement for Baltimore County Public Schools. These, this slide shows you the major and the systemic projects that we have listed from last year in the FY twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Program, and were now fully funded and are therefore not listed in the twenty-five fiscal year twenty-five capital budget. Deer Park, Scotts Branch, Dundalk, and Towson High School are the major projects, and then you can see the various systemics that we've also shown. And I don't know if Paul wants to take over his.
Everybody hear me?
Yep.
Good evening. Based on the latest published data for twenty twenty-two, this slide represents capacity utilization by categories of elementary, middle, and high schools. Note that the green, blue indicates less than a hundred percent capacity utilization. The yellow is in a range of a hundred to a hundred fifteen percent utilization, and the orange and red represents above hundred and fifteen percent. Next slide, please. This indicates a trends of our projected enrollment over the years compared to our actual enrollment over the years. You can see that because of COVID, there has been a gap, but we are quickly adjusting so that our projections are more in line with what the actual enrollment is. Next slide, please. This slide shows the dots are the projects that are in the FY twenty-five capital program and where they are in the county. The red shaded areas are areas of social vulnerability. This gives you an idea of where the projects are and how they are in areas that need these projects and would help contribute to the helping with equity without, throughout the county. Next slide. Merrill, would you want to continue with these?
Certainly. Our FY twenty twenty-five CIP requests for the Southwest area include a roof replacement for Westchester Elementary School, a roof replacement and mechanical upgrades at Winfield, and a mechanical upgrade at Woodbridge Elementary School. Next slide. I apologize, I'm having a little bit of. There we go. In the Northwest area, our CIP includes a planning study for a Northwest area career and technology education school, or CTE school, mechanical upgrades at Timber Grove, and a roof replacement at Wynand. Our FY twenty twenty-five CIP requests for the Central area include the replacement of Delaney High School, a roof replacement for Hereford Middle School, mechanical upgrades for Pretty Boy, and Seventh District Elementary Schools, and a roof replacement for Villa Cresta Elementary. Of note, Towson High School, like Delaney, is in the design stage as a replacement project, but it is being funded through the Built to Learn Act and therefore is not shown on this slide. Our FY twenty twenty-five CIP requests for the Northeast area include a planning study for the Northeast area high school, repurposing of Golden Ring Middle School, and the former Rosedale Center, as well as electrical upgrades at Eastern Technical High School, mechanical upgrades at Fullerton Elementary School, and a roof replacement at McCormick Elementary School. Of note, per the my IPAS recommendations, a study was conducted to evaluate options to provide capacity relief for the high schools in the Northeast area. In the Southeast area, our FY twenty twenty-five CIP requests include an addition at Patapsco High School, planning study for Deep Creek Elementary School, roof replacements at Dundalk Middle School, Edgemere Elementary School, and Sandy Plains Elementary School, as well as mechanical upgrades at Sandalwood. Additionally, per the my IPAS recommendations, our FY twenty twenty-five CIP requests an evaluation of options to provide capacity relief at high schools in the Southeast area, as well as Sparres Point Middle School, to determine if replacement, renovation, or an addition is appropriate of either in an elementary, middle, or high school in the area. Our challenges in completing construction and improvement projects include labor shortages, and increasing construction costs and supply chain issues, as everybody is probably aware. Environmental and sustainability. We are very proud of our record with environmental and sustainability projects. We are proposing to build our new replacement school at Deer Park Elementary School as our first net zero school in Baltimore County. We have already achieved lead gold at two of our recent schools, Dundalk Elementary and Dundalk Solers Point High School. We have already achieved lead gold, I'm sorry. All of our schools constructed since twenty-ten have achieved lead silver or better. And last, next slide. We are also proud of our accomplishments in school construction and improvements. This slide lists current projects that are either in design, in construction, or have been recently opened, new and replacement schools. We're open for questions.
Thank you very much. I now open it to the board if there are any questions for anyone from the school system.
Well, this is Peter Array. I just have a comment. We just want to thank you guys. I am here at District Six, and you did a great job to construct Red House Run Elementary. It's over moving. It's a beautiful building. Just want to say thank you.
I have a question as well. So, no, definitely want to echo what Peter said. Definitely appreciate all the hard work that you're doing, especially over here in District Six with the new middle school and the two elementary schools, but I did have a question about Overly High School. It looks like per your map that it is in that one hundred and fifteen percent population or above. But I haven't seen anything as far as improvements or any suggestions that might be made to the high school. Is there any plans for Overly High School to be upgraded or renovated, or plans for helping out with the overpopulation there as well?
So I'll begin and invite McMerrill or Lupka to add in. Overly High School is one of the schools in the Northeast, as we said, we're looking at studying and looking at options in the Northeast. Overly would be, would be a part, would be a part of that. It's part of the cluster investigation that we would have in that area. Although a renovation were completed there very recently, we do recognize that that Northeast area high school situation requires further study. Merrill, did you have anything you wanted to add or?
I think you gave a pretty complete answer unless there's more information that they'd like to know.
Mr. Grimm's mic is just a little muffled. Would you mind kind of summarizing that so we can hear it a little more clear?
Yeah, what, what Dr. Grimm was saying was that our, our study in the Northeast area to look at all of the schools in the Northeast area to try to relieve some of the capacity issues, as well as any condition, conditions that are prevalent in the area. That's part of the Northeast area study. We have not completed that or concluded that study as yet. We'll be going to the board at some point in the near future to bring up the various options that are the most economically viable in the area of the Northeast part of the county. And Overly will be part of that discussion.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Shafika, I know, I know you are in charge of.
Peter, Peter?
Yes.
There are others who have their hand raised. Okay. Ms. German, I know you had your hand up.
Yes, thanks, Scott. I just need a little bit of clarification about what the plan is for the overcrowding down in Edgemere, Sparres Point.
Dr. Grimm, do you want to respond to that?
Certainly. So, one of the, one of the requests that, that we've made, and can you hear me? I know my, my mic was having trouble.
I can, Dr. Grimm. Thank you.
So, that is, that's, that's one of the solutions that we're seeking problems for. I'm sorry, one of the problems that we're seeking solutions for, excuse me.
You may, you may have been right the first time.
And looking, and looking at, looking at that particular area. We've been, we've been surveying sites down in that area. We're working very closely with county government to see what's available. And so the, the next assessment, now that we're honing in on which sites are available to us, where we can, where we can build, where we can renovate, where we can add, will be to determine whether the best decision is with an elementary, a middle, or a high school project in the area. So that's, that, that is part of what we're still examining. What is the best project for the area based on the land and the opportunities that we have? And again, the county's been a terrific partner with us to try to make those determinations, because as you know, land is extremely scarce. Buildable land is extremely scarce in that area.
Okay, thank you.
That answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Brophy, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you so much. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Quick question. On one of those maps, you had identified areas of vulnerability. What factors do you guys use to determine those areas of vulnerability?
I can respond to that, Dr. Grimm. Those maps are developed by Baltimore County Government and have been provided to us to be able to locate our projects on those maps. So I'm not exactly sure all of the conditions under which those maps are developed.
Okay, but I see, so basically, a lot of the CIP projects you're pushing, I can see a lot of the dots are within those vulnerability areas. So it's basically just getting everybody up to par and kind of on the same page, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I can expand to that. So, so five of the fourteen elementary projects are within a socially vulnerable area. The one middle school project is within a socially vulnerable area, and three of the four high school projects are. So these are developed by, by the VC Stat Program, and as Mr. Plait said, we, we plot that on to overlay those conditions.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis, you had your hand up?
Yes. The board has recommended for the last six or seven years additional space be added to the Hereford High School Gymnasium. It's been forty years since that gym was built and the space, and there's an after-school participation has been tremendous at the high school, and it's a big distance between where the parents have to go back and forth to the school to deliver their children for the different practices. Has there been any effort at all to investigate expansion of that gym of an effort?
Merrill, I don't know if you want to speak to the historical aspect of that.
We have, we have started, we have investigated that on occasion. There are no schools, high schools at this time that have expanded gyms to the size that, that has been recommended in the past by the board. Generally speaking, what we try to do, we've got such limited funds despite the size of our capital program. The need is, as you can imagine, much, much greater. So we have a tendency to focus more on the classroom as much as possible and on systemic renovations as much as possible to be able to put the money directly in the areas where it's going to benefit the children the most in education. So at this time, we have not focused on expanding the gymnasium at Hereford High School at this time.
Due to the fact that much time is spent after school for these children as in school, and the, the interest in having them in a constructive, positive activity, I think are, are very important. And I think there's been not a lot of attention given to Hereford because of its distance north.
Well, we have, I will do want to add that we have recently gone in and not only dramatically improved the tennis courts at Hereford High School, but you know, you may know that right adjacent to the gym is a tennis court that has not been usable. And we have upgraded that tennis court, so now there are, I believe, it's five fully functioning tennis courts at Hereford High School.
Yeah, that's good for two to four people at a time as opposed to whole teams. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pirlo, did you have your hand up?
I did. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question, I guess, to, you know, the presenters are, we thank you for the report, and we understand how important education is for our children as I'm a product of Baltimore County High Schools, or all schools. I guess the trend, there was an early map or early slide that showed that our numbers, you projected a hundred, a hundred and twelve thousand, we've had a hundred and ten thousand. It appears to be on a downward slope from twenty nineteen, twenty to a hundred and sixteen. I guess, have you done projections that are out ten years and even twenty years? You know, it appears that you all rebuild a school, elementary to high school every fifty years, every sixty years. And I guess my second part of my question to you all is, you know, what kind of replacement schedule would you say that you're on? You know, I saw that you did at Plaxton High School, where I went was a renovation rather than a new school. I understand new schools are almost double, and the renovation looks beautiful, and it seems to be functioning very well the last four or five years. So, you know, we always have to be. I understand renovating these schools, there's a lot of wear and tear on it. I understand these are children all the way up to high school ones who can be, you know, a little rough on the facilities and the lockers and all. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about the trend and how often we really do. I look and see that you replaced Summit High School. I watched it being built, you know, on the hillside over the last year or two. But the old school, to me, and I don't know the, the heating and the air conditioning plants and the other things that we need, I'm not focused on that, but, you know, it is probably the county's largest, you know, part of our capital budget is new schools for the, for the community, which of course are important, but you got to be able to pay for them too, of course. So if you'd answer those, I'd appreciate it.
I can respond, excuse me, I can respond to the question about the projections. Every year, we do ten-year projections. And we're always looking ahead by ten years. That's a requirement by the state. Currently, the projections are relatively flat. This chart is exaggerated slightly. I mean, you see the top is near one seventeen, the bottom's one ten. So the gap right now is exaggerated just to show the difference more easily. But yes, we are monitoring the enrollment, and the enrollments are at every level, every grade, every year. And I would refer to Mr. Plait to talk about the cycles for capital projects.
But before you do that, can you, do you have a sense, so if we were to go out to twenty thirty-five? I mean, if right now we're at a hundred and ten thousand students, are we projected to be about the same number, a little lower in ten years?
It's projected to be slightly higher, but as you can, the blue line is the projections. So before COVID, we were projected to go up, and we dropped significantly in reality with, red is reality. And so we are adjusting our formulas to better make sure our projection is better aligned with the reality. Our consultant, who actually performs these for us, had anticipated that there might be some recovery from from COVID, but that hasn't occurred. So that's why we're adjusting our formulas to better align. But we anticipate not a significant change.
And are there any particular parts of the county or, you know, types of schools where the projections tended to be more often, you know, that's, we're looking at like almost, well, now it's about two thousand, but initially it was, you know, several thousand students different, and is that, was that sort of evenly spread, or were there some parts where the projections were more often actually occurred?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you're right. The, this is the aggregate. And when you look at the school level, you look at different regions, there is variation. And there's some areas where schools are actually going up. But there's, that's shown in the previous map where we're projecting overutilization and overcrowding. And there's some areas where it's going down. So there is variation, as you suggested, by region and by school level.
But I did ask how often, you know, do you project that schools are replaced? Are you looking to renovate schools, to replace them? And then I would make one point from us as the Planning Board. We're told that we have probably less than four thousand buildable lots in Baltimore County, other than maybe a putt or something if there was land available. So I think we've been under the impression from our planning department over the last, you know, five years at least, that there's not a whole lot left to develop in Baltimore County. So to me, I'm hoping that your people that take into the projections understand that we really have very little land to build on, so that's going to limit the number of people going into the various schools. You know, population is dropping all over the country. Um, you know, population is dropping all over the country. Um, the people aren't having as many children at that point. I just don't want to see us get to the point of having overbuilt these in ten or twenty years. And now we've got empty buildings that um, aren't being used at that point, understanding that overcrowding is a problem. Um, but many of us that went through schools, you know, somehow made it in life, but even living in trailers, you know, that we had at Pikeville at one time too, and these other schools have too. I just don't want to see us overbuild um, when we really don't have the the growth potential here in this county. So I want you all really focused on that.
Mr. Perlo, if I can respond really quickly and and ask Mr. Plate, Mr. Taylor, thank you for your response before Mr. Plate responds about the cycle that you asked about. Um, I want to go back to a comment you made earlier. Uh, you're correct, that that Pikesville um, renovation that was completed uh, was one of the the proudest uh, projects that we've had. What a, what a beautiful renovation to to a beautiful school and an existing school. Um, and it was extremely well done. Um, it was cost effective. Um, it it's effective for our school system and we I think the challenge that we have is that is that based on when they were built, how they were designed um, and whether or not they are currently educationally adequate plays into uh, some of the challenges we have, whether a project will be slated for a renovation or renovation addition, a replacement project or or as a new school. So we do take all of those things into consideration. And I just wanted to highlight, you mentioned Pikesville. That that is an excellent example of a project that was that we were able to do extremely well um, because the existing structure was in good shape. The other existing systems, as you know, the mechanical system, the other pieces, we could, we could replace and upgrade them efficiently and effectively. And the space on the existing site was there um, for what we needed to do. So many, there's, there's many factors that that come into play when we take a look at some of these projects. And you're correct, um, that project um, at at forty, fifty million is very different than uh, what a new school costs us to construct, particularly at the high school level. Mr. Plate, did you want to add anything?
You covered it pretty completely. I would just add one thing that um, before we replace a school, we we perform what we call a feasibility study, which is um, outlined uh, by state criteria. And what we do is we compare several options. We'll look at renovating the school, the cost of renting, renovating the school or the cost of replacement. And generally speaking, if a replacement of the school is within about ten percent of the cost of renovating the school and providing an addition, then um, it it tends to be more cost effective to actually replace the school with all the criteria that we look at that's required in a new school, everything from the security to the I T requirements. So all those things, including the three uh, pillars of my I pass that Dr. Grimm just mentioned are all taken into account before we replace the school.
Ms. Wolfson, did you have your hand up?
Yes, yes. Um, so I I'm in District Four and I still reside in the same just same um, uh, elementary school district, Winfield Elementary School that I went to elementary school in. Um, so could someone tell me what the build date was on Scott's branch? Original build date? Wasn't that around nineteen sixty, close there?
If you'll give me a minute, I will find that out.
All right. Well, the reason why I'm asking that is that I know that Scott's branch is uh, being um, replaced. Um, Winfield was built in um, nineteen six, or was opened in nineteen sixty-seven. I see that you, I believe you have um, a request for replacing the roof on Winfield. Am I correct about that?
If mechanical system upgrade and a roof replacement, yes, ma'am.
So so what, what is the projected life of that roof replacement?
Uh, generally speaking, uh, they are warranted for twenty-five years.
Okay, so we're making a twenty-five year investment on a um, on a school that is uh, thirty-three and twenty-four. I mean, you know, it's, it's a pretty old building at this point. Is it worth the reinvestment? Or should we be considering a replacement for Winfield as well?
Well, generally speaking, um, even if we considered a um, replacement of Winfield right now um, and the funding were available right now, it would be about six or seven years before we could replace, literally open up a new Winfield and have the students there. In the meantime, we've got a roof and a mechanical system that is in dire need of uh, upgrades and improvements. And um, Baltimore County Public Schools found out in the early two thousands, the very early two thousands, what happens when roofs tend to leak and how much studying can be done uh, or learning, excuse me, learning can be done when we're having to close schools because roofs were not replaced on a regular basis every twenty-five years. Um, I don't know the um, the condition assessment off the top of my head for Winfield, uh, for Winfield. Uh, but we have assessed in our own uh, determination through my I pass and other uh, techniques that we use, internal uh, history that both the mechanical system and the roof systems need to be replaced at Winfield right now. And so we're doing that and that the school is in good enough condition at this point um, to proceed into the future.
Okay, so you know.
I have, I I just, one, one small thing, the date that I have is nineteen sixty-six. Um, so you were extremely close in nineteen sixty-seven.
Well, I I it was because um, we were, we had to go to Palhatten until Winfield was open. So maybe, maybe it was before Christmas. I can't exactly recall. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm not seeing any other hands. Did anybody else want to ask any questions?
I have one quick follow-up, Scott, if I may have a second.
Sure.
Uh, so I just want to follow up to uh, Dr. Grimm and Mr. Platt. I know we were talking recently uh, about the feasibility studies. Um, for that Northeast feasibility study, is that ongoing? Um, because to my knowledge, there was one that was conducted back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Um, does that still hold weight or is there a new process? I see the new language here seems to be about the social vulnerability. Is that new process? Um, how long does it take? Um, am I inaccurate in in that prior feasibility study effect? Does that make sense?
Thank you. Thank you for your question and and I'll start out and and Mr. Blake can certainly add on to to my response if necessary. Um, I think part of the the challenge that we had in the Northeast is that our team took some options and some ideas to the Board of Education around what what we could do and what we could um, what what were the best options that we believed in for the for the area at that time. Um, the board had some questions and concerns with um, those particular options and the sites that were available to us at that time. So there have been studies that have been conducted of the of the area. And we're trying to adjust those findings um, with work that has been done already in the area to hone in on what's going to be the best site for a Northeast area high school, whether that's an addition, whether that's a renovation, or whether that's a replacement and what that project will look like. I think it's also important to keep in mind as Mr. Taylor talked about the uh, when we, and I'm just just moving to the slide, when we look at our enrollment and how our enrollment projections have changed over time, the funding that we receive from the state is also calculated um, into this process. So um, some figures that we may have been looking at uh, three or four years ago may have changed a little bit. So it's important for us to keep in tune with with that. So, plate, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, sir, not this time.
Awesome. Now, I definitely appreciate that explanation. Um, and I'm also, I'm sure that you guys are thinking of this as well. Um, from from what we can see, and I think I'm Mr. Perlo kind of was echoing that, especially in the Northeast, we've seen a lot of new construction, new developments coming on. Um, so I I understand the protect, projection is going down, but I would assume that it would go right back up, especially with the cost of living going up. If you're paying seven hundred thousand dollars for a townhouse, you might not have money to send your kids to private school anymore either. So they might be coming back.
Mr. Perlo, did you have your hand back up?
Uh, plenty more, just I'd like to recognize Dr. Miriam Rogers, who is um, is on camera, who's joined us at this time.
Dr. Rogers, you want to take a a minute to address the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
Just really want to thank the board for the opportunity to present to you guys. I apologize for the technical issues. Uh, but the team has done a wonderful job of uh, sharing our plan and sharing with competing interests. Um, you know, how we prioritize the capital projects. I definitely uh, have listened throughout uh, feedback and the questions that you've asked, very thoughtful about, you know, the progress that we're making in um, close collaboration with our county government partners and um, uh, truly appreciate the feedback from uh, our last board member who was speaking about, you know, um, families returning back to the school system. And so uh, we are hopeful that our enrollment is going to bounce back, but we also are expanding uh, pre-kindergarten aggressively across all areas uh, to help to boost those enrollment numbers. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Mr. Array?
Um, this question is for Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, since you are in charge of uh, maintenance uh, here at Overly High School, they have been since, in fact, they did renovation a few years ago. And there've been electrical malfunction issues in some sections of the building of the school. Are you aware of that? Please, and if you are, would you please send someone to that to see what they can do? Because there've been complaints. And at Overly, Shafik is the the P T A president. Shafik, I'm sure you are aware of that too, right?
So, Mr. Array, I just want to clarify, Mr. Taylor is not responsible for our mechanical, our mechanical systems. Um, that gentleman's name is is Mr. Chris Roberts, in charge of our uh, facility support services. I I know for a fact that Mr. Roberts has been uh, too overly personally. I believe he's going there again um, in the in the next couple of days. We were just speaking about this, um, either either yesterday or today. Um, so he has been monitoring those systems as well as the H P A systems in that facility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, unless there are any other questions? Howard, you have your hand up again?
Scott, I have a question. This is Bev.
Howard, we can't hear you.
I can?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I cut off when the uh, chairman of the school board or whatever came on and I didn't get to finish what I'd like to see. I'd like to see the Board of Education report back to you from your question, Scott, and mine, what the projection, the enrollment projections would be ten years from now, even twenty years from now. I'd like to see the numbers to be sure, what I asked about, which is that we don't have a lot of new construction coming on. And because of that, I want to be sure that we're not overbuilding our schools, hoping we got to take care of Northeast, make sure we have enough seats for everybody. I get that. But to be sure overall in the county, um, you know, I'd like to see that information, if that can be sent back to us before we get through our whole um, capital improvement budget process.
I'm happy to share that um, ten year projections are a hundred and thirteen thousand students approximately. But that detailed information will be published shortly in our students' count document, and that's something available on our website. So you can see per school, per level, all the rolling projections over the next ten years.
That would be useful. Ms. German, you have a question?
Do, Scott, thank you. Um, Dr. Rogers, first of all, I'm a retired B C P S principal, proud to serve for thirty years in Baltimore County. Um, I have a question about the projected high school in the Northeast area. And through my work at Towson University, I know there are a lot of um, creative ideas, and I think I'm, I've been impressed so far with the forward thinking of the new leadership in Baltimore County. I'm wondering whether there has been any thought given to, in the Northeast area, a Pathways High School where there would be a focus on uh, kids who want to be nurses, teachers, firefighters, uh, et cetera. Um, and they could go to a high school where they could get a head, I, a head start. I know that many of the high schools now are working very closely with uh, C C B C, and I know we have a uh, presentation coming up from that fine organization. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Thank you very much uh, for your kind remarks. Uh, so currently, uh, I think Dr. Grimm shared, you know, we're really uh, steeped in looking for the Northwest uh, career technical um, high school. And you know, that really speaks to the partnerships uh, that you're talking about where students have those opportunities uh, for internships and to be credentialed before they leave high school. Um, we have a strong, robust partnership with C C B C as well. And so there are opportunities for our students either through dual enrollment while they're with us or uh, shortly after to matriculate at C C B C um, and then move to a four-year college. Uh, but even though we're not looking at a whole school currently, uh, because I think Dr. Grimm and Mr. Plate spoke to the limited resources, uh, what we are doing is we're leveraging those blueprint uh, workforce development funds. Um, you know, to further develop relationships with partners. Um, you know, I've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, but also with, you know, uh, hospitals, universities. Um, we recently just met with Stevenson around, um, you know, firefighting uh, specifically as Baltimore County used to have a program um, some time ago that, you know, there's some interest uh, between, you know, to uh, re uh, imagine that program and bring it, bring it back to our schools based on the shortage that exists in Baltimore County as well as the program that's available at C C B C. So my short answer is a whole school, not yet because of the limited, limited funds, but we are looking at how do we use those blueprint funds that are specifically around career readiness to expand those partnerships and give students opportunities, really across all areas um, in B C P S, you know, uh, focused on the areas of interest for our student, but also the areas of need for our communities.
Thank you.
That sounds like a good segue. Um, I want to thank Dr. Rogers and her staff for the presentation and the material. Uh, if you can get us some of the information that some of the planning board uh, requested that, that would be great. Um, and I now want to turn to, since we were just speaking about, I now want to turn to uh, invite Dr. Curt Nidus and her team from the Community College of Baltimore County to begin their presentation. Thank you very much.
Yes, here we are. We we were listening. So, Dr. Rogers, we love what you were saying because we love working with your, your whole new team and with the um, the, the triple C, I was going to say. Anyway, we're very pleased, as always, to get a chance to tell you a little bit about um, the worth of your community college. So you will be inclined to support us with our our recommendations and our needs. And so I will start with a few highlights and then turn to Vice President Hop uh, to go into detail about our program. So let let me, I'm not sure who's putting up the slides. Eric? That's us. That's right. Thank you, Eric. Yes, you know, you've heard us say that, uh, as promised, we would definitely come out of a pandemic with both vision and strength, and we've added a lot to that. You can see, we're really focusing on what an extraordinary time this is for transformation, and we are all in moving in that direction. Couple of nice things about, Eric, I'm clicking, but nothing's happening. There we go. I I want you to be always um, proud of your community college. So we, we always have to brag about the impressive. So we, we always have to brag about the impressive things that we've collected, our medals and our awards. Also, we've had a number of important visitors this year. Governor Moore came to visit our HVAC labs. And I will tell you, the students were just agog. They were so impressed and amazed by the governor coming there and spending time with them. And then we had a visit from the Secretary of Transportation who added nearly $200,000 to the, uh, $750,000. So we have about a hun- a million dollars to support the expansion of our CDL program. Everybody needs truckers and we are ready to support them. And then also thanks to all of you, we actually had the ribbon cutting ceremony for our most recent project, the Wellness Center on the Essex campus. And again, as you can see from the attendees, uh, lots of our political colleagues who work with all of us to help make these good things happen. But the most important event that happened to us in the recent past is we were contacted by the White House uh, to act as the, sort of the opening act for the new National Director of Cyber Security. His name is Mr. Harry Coker, and there he is at the podium. But I wanted to just say, this was neither a political event nor a political statement, but a great compliment, not only to our college, because they could have gone to UMBC, they could have gone, well, to Towson. They could have gone anywhere. They could have gone to the University of Maryland, but they chose CCBC in part because of the stature of our cybersecurity program. You may be impressed to know that we actually have about 6,400 students in our technology classes right now. And recent, over the past, uh, three years, 500 graduates in cyber that are now in the business and industry community in the, uh, the Baltimore region. So nothing like this has ever happened to us in our 67 years. You can see the auditorium, we had about 500 people here.
I want to applaud the approach that Dr. Kurt Nidus and her team here at CCBC have, have paved. This is a place that welcomes, fosters, and empowers all students. We heard a story this morning of, of a, a student who didn't graduate from high school and was shut out of certain institutions. CCBC welcomed that individual and he is thriving, not only thriving, but he's giving back. That's the type of leadership we need. Um, more than 50% of your students are people of color and more than 60% of women. Uh, you are helping to accentuate the value of diversity and trying to close that 500,000 gap. Thank you. We also had, uh, the, the opportunity to meet several members from the Women in Tech- Technology Club this morning, in addition to some of those veterans, because of all of you. Uh, your passion and commitment is our nation's greatest asset. We cannot run away from that. And I'm so pleased to be in a community that embraces and empowers people, one that cares deeply about the public and one that is committed to partnership. To the professors, staff, and faculty, thank you all for this you do to train and equip the next generation of cyber professionals. Uh, we need your expertise and continued dedication, and I know, have no doubt, uh, that we have it. You're a role model. Uh, and on behalf of everyone who can remember their favorite teacher at a moment's notice, we're just grateful, uh, for you.
You know, we were so, um, touched by the fact that they understood, this is what they understood about us, that the population that we serve, we have plenty of doctor's sons and lawyer's daughters sitting in our classrooms. But the primary, the primary population that we serve, as you can see, 82% of our students live in vulnerable, in underserved areas. And all this translates into what we, uh, call leading with equity. This is who sits in our classrooms. You can see we had close to 49,000 students last year. And you see the average age of 36, 59% are women, 89% of them attend part-time. So, you know, you look at this, the nature of these students, and then you know that you have to be looking, we have to be looking at who is sitting in our classrooms today and how do we support them? How do we build buildings for them? How do we do the things that they need, not the things we did 20 or 30 years ago? And that really does translate into our commitment to leading with equity. This is us. This picture right here represents who sits in CCBC's classrooms today. And we embrace this broad definition of diversity. So every one of us counts. And we spend a lot of time at the board level, the college senate level, the executive staff, almost all the faculty. We spend an awful lot of time taking actions that matter because words are ephemeral and easy, easily forgotten, but it's action that shapes the lives of generations to come. So we're very proud of the fact that not only do we live and practice this, we also have been acknowledged, uh, in a number of ways, special recognitions for our efforts, um, diversity and equity. And the picture at the bottom is our Board of Trustees. We won a national award, the Charles Kennedy, uh, Award from the ACCT. And that, we were all there with bells on, very proud and very happy. But we are also, uh, data-driven. We actually had our board approve our new strategic plan last June. It drives much of what you will be hearing Vice President, uh, Hop speak to in a moment. These are our four, uh, goals and everything we're doing surrounds one or the other, or the third or the fourth. So I'll just leave you with two really good things that are happening at CCBC. One is the, the, really the amazing expansion of our tuition-free initiative. Uh, we're very proud of the fact that over the past three years, we've been able to serve about 85% of our students. That's full-time, part-time, it's credit, non-credit, all of these students attending, uh, CCBC with partial or full scholarships. In other words, attending CCBC tuition-free. And the companion piece to that, and I don't know whether Dr. Rogers is still on here on the call, but the companion piece to that is the Degrees to Succeed, uh, program that we have rolled out to, uh, help our students transcend all of the transfer admissions issues that they have. So we have eight partners. This is dual admissions on steroids. You come to CCBC, we accept you at CCBC, you are conditionally accepted by any one of our eight partners. And together, we sort of love you up for the two or three years that you are here. And you transfer as a full junior with no fooling around with credits that you didn't take or that they don't trust. And the real, I think, you know, the, the real, uh, outcome of all of this is, uh, we have this value proposition. So you come to CCBC and so many of our students attend tuition-free. And you go here for two years at no cost, and then you go any place that you want. And although the college presidents of these institutions would prefer, I never show this slide, what you can see is that two years for free times 20,000 at Morgan State is 20,000. Four years at Morgan is 80,000. Go all the way to Johns Hopkins, two years at Hopkins, after two years free at CCBC is 165,000. Do it on your own with all four years, it's 330,000. So all of this really translates, we think, into the solid contribution that our community college makes to Baltimore County. And every year we, we graduate roughly about three, 13,000, uh, students who leave with the degree, certificate, a transfer. And they mostly stay in, uh, in our, in our county or in our Baltimore region. And we think that's our gift to our community. So with that, I'll just sort of use this as a slide for easing Vice President Hop's, uh, conversation with you. We now have eight sites in our, our online virtual site. Now, uh, let's see, last year I had about 44,000 enrollments. So we're on the move, we're on the make, we're doing all the stuff we can. And we're here to petition your support for some other big plans that we have. Your turn.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kurt Nidus. I want to, um, uh, start by saying in this second year of biennium, we of course are seeking support for the fiscal year '25 budget. But, uh, we are not seeking any additional county funding for '25. We're only, uh, seeking approval to appropriate money that we will get from the state and the fees that we have collected for students for, uh, capital projects. Perhaps more important is looking ahead towards the bond referendum in no, in this coming November. And that, of course, will be the '26, '27 biennium. We're seeking, uh, your support for $21 million in that bond referendum for CCBC. That's 2.5 million more than the target. Um, but I think you'll see throughout this presentation that that's a wise investment and one that will continue to pay dividends as CCBC helps our local economy. Let me remind you of how big CCBC is. We have, uh, 1.8 million gross square feet across our, uh, seven sites. And every dollar that we get from Baltimore County, we leverage that investment to secure additional funds from the state, from the federal government, or even from donors. We are proud of our continued work to, uh, expand and to renovate in a green way. Um, we, uh, we take our, our, um, desire to support the earth and improve sustainability very seriously. Any of you that have been on our main campuses have seen probably the hallmark of that effort, which is our solar carports that generate about a quarter of the college's, uh, electricity needs. I'm gonna do a little deeper dive on, uh, on what Dr. Kurt Nidus shared was good news, um, of the, uh, ribbon cutting for the Essex Wellness and Athletics Project. That was an $18 million project and Baltimore County provided, uh, $9.2 million. Here you see the outside of the building. Um, we have a beautiful new, uh, fitness center, an 8,000-square-foot fitness center that, uh, is used for classes and for, uh, student wellness. And there you see the dance studio, but the students were very excited to provide us a, uh, a small demonstration of their excitement in that, uh, that new studio. We have two of those. CCBC's program is accredited by the National Association of Schools of Dance. And then lastly, because, you know, we want to, we want to jam pack every piece of, every opportunity to gain value, we added, um, in our stormwater management area, an environmental science laboratory. And it's right there on the, uh, on the loop. And it's an opportunity for science students to, uh, see what's happening in our environment. And that's all part of that investment. Other projects that we are happy to have completed since we last talked to you was the vehicle maintenance shop at CCBC Dundalk and the roof replacement on the administration building at CCBC Essex. We have one project that we're getting ready, um, to go into construction. And that is the CCBC Dundalk Student Services Center. And design is complete. I think we're just waiting for the, um, uh, the permit and, uh, we'll be into construction within about 30, 30 days. Also in progress, not very exciting, but, um, the underground piping loop that, uh, moves our hot and chilled water and natural gas at CCBC Essex. And then lastly, here's a picture of some of the deferred maintenance projects, um, that we completed in the last year. Of course, there are many others. So now let's look quickly at our '25 capital budget. And, uh, the, the budget that you all have in your packet is 13,280,000. And that's the appropriation of, of anticipated state funds and 750,000 of student fees. Since we submitted the packet, uh, Governor Moore has presented his capital budget. And those two big projects, $11 million, have been moved to the FY '26 funding round, um, as opposed to FY '25. So our '25 capital budget request drops down to 1,953,000. Again, it's no, no county money, but, uh, the appropriation and authorization to spend the state and student fees. The important part from our point of view is to look towards that future biennium. And we seek a $2.5 million increase. This kind of shares with you, um, where county funding has been for CCBC over the biennium. And you can see back in, in 2006, 2014, we had an average funding of about 26 million per biennium. And since that time, it's been steadily increasing. Um, and our target for FY '26, '27 is 18.5 million. CCBC seeks that increase of 2.5 million to bring us to a total of 21 million. And that, of course, would go to the voters this November. This gives you a picture of what that biennium budget would look like. $21 million of, uh, county funds. That would be focused, um, I'll walk through the projects that it'll be, uh, focused on. Um, first is, you've heard, you've heard us talk about, because we, we have to kind of fund this in pieces, our Catonsville Student Services renovation. That's a $40 million, uh, project. And we hope to begin, uh, construction, uh, next, in the, in the coming fall and, uh, complete the project in fall of '26. So this is some additional funding, which will be matched by state funding. That project includes, um, renovation of the, or in preservation of the historic ruins that are right next to the building and turn those into an outdoor learning and gathering space. I think you see that what we're trying to do is to, um, ensure that every square foot of, um, of the renovation adds additional value to the campus and to the student experience. So, um, in this coming biennium, that would be 5.5 million of county funds and then almost 16 million of state funds. This project is one that we haven't talked to you about, but it is to add a 20,000-square-foot addition to our transportation technology building. That facility is where we train, um, auto, auto mechanics. And, um, you know, there is a, a nice, um, space for gasoline engine cars, but we need to increase and diversify our training into electric vehicles. And so we need an addition, an additional base for those electrical vehicle, um, maintenance and to teach those mechanics. maintenance and to teach those mechanics. And this is really important because our program is nationally accredited by the Automotive Service Engineers Educational Foundation. That'll be about a $20 million project. And of course, half of it would be state-funded. Not very exciting, but it is time to replace the electrical switchgear at CCBC Essex. We have design funds from you, but this goes to construction into the next biennium. And 52% of the money will come from the state. There's another picture of the switchgear, and you see it's 7.3% from the state, 6.2% from the county. And then the last major project is to do stormwater management work at our CCBC Catonsville project. You saw that we did a good deal of stormwater management with our wellness project at CCBC Essex. And now it's time to address CCBC Catonsville with about a $2 million project, 50% funded, oh wow, 47% funded by Baltimore County, 53% funded by the state. In addition, we've requested $5 million for just general capital maintenance and renovations. And at our 1.8 million gross square feet, we're talking about $2 per square foot for that biennium. It's not a lot, but it does allow us to continue to maintain, work to maintain the facility. And then there are other projects. We put funds into the ADA alterations and asbestos abatement. But of course, what we use, the already appropriated money as we come across it, come across these portions of the project. And then there would be some miscellaneous programmatic renovations over those next two years on all three of the main campuses. The capital improvement plan goes beyond that. We can talk a little bit more about that next year. But let me say that as you consider the increase of $2.5 million for the next biennium, that we're continuing to be grateful for the support that you and Baltimore County provide to the college. So thank you very much. And I know that the President and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is always an interesting and enlightening presentation. I want to take one quick question. I'm assuming that the dollar values that you were showing over time are not inflation-adjusted? So they're real dollars? And so therefore, even if it looks like it's approaching, it's not buying as much as it did 10 years ago?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Warren?
As always, I kind of parrot this every time you guys speak. I think it's the best value that we get from our taxpayers' dollars in the county. You guys do an amazing job. I actually have two graduates of Essex that are graduating from Towson this year as tellers at one of my branches. And they're great young men and just can't say enough about what you guys do. And hopefully, we can support you in any way possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Hafford?
I'm not a Taylor Swift groupie, but I'm a CCBC groupie. I am so grateful for all that you have done for so many young adults and people of all ages here in Baltimore County. There's no greater deterrent for crime than giving people the opportunity to learn how to have a trade and be educated. They can earn a living. And you both and your staff have just such passion for that. And I've watched you over the last, since 2011, being on the planning board. So I'm just amazed every time I see you present and so grateful for what you do for the people of Baltimore County.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. German?
First of all, Ty, thanks for those comments about the great partnership between kids that start at CCBC and end up at Towson University and turn out to be great workers. So that makes me feel good as a Towson University person. My sister is a math teacher. She inherited all of the numbers genes in the family. So, and I, so my data is usually qualitative data versus quantitative data that I pay attention to. And I spent two days, two full days doing mock interviews with high school kids in Baltimore County. Of the eight students that I spent time with, and they were all really, really cool kids, two are going into the military, they're all seniors, and the other six have already started at CCBC. Accumulating credits, and they made it very, and I was in the southeast area. So these kids didn't have a lot of financial resources, and I'm a Dundalk girl, so I appreciate that. But they made it very, very clear to me that without CCBC, they would not be, they would not have access to higher education. So keep on doing what you're doing. So impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a wonderful story.
Ms. Wolfson? Can't hear you.
No, because I didn't have my voice on. But I'm going to, I'm going to get on a soapbox here for a minute because tomorrow I retire from my business. I am a product of 12 years of Baltimore County schools and two years of the CCC, where I got my accounting AA. My company's been bought out by a big Canadian company. And all I can say to the traffic control industry is lookout. I call it my silver plate parachute as I leave this industry. And it's in great part because of my time, it, six years it took me to get my AA because I was working full-time. So thank you immensely. Two questions I have to ask. I see that you're asking for additional funds for the auto repair program, which is well documented, how successful you are with that. But have you considered the cost as we've got adequate bays for gas engines? Have you considered the cost of the transition, transitioning those bays to electric repair, vehicle repair? And my second question is, because I'm in District 4, where the Woodstock Job Corps is located, you know, they're federally funded from the Department of Labor. And they are located, I just did the math, they're less than six miles from the Randalls Town facility, your Randalls Town campus. They're nine miles from Owings Mills, and they're 18 miles from Catonsville. And I know this isn't capital, but I'm just wondering, you know, that you've got a fabulous program for CDLs. Many of these kids, many of these students, they don't have driver's license lease-wise as CDL. Has there been any consideration with partnering with them to help these especially vulnerable students that are, many of them are far from home? And so that's, that's what I, that's my input. Thank you so much. And you are, we look forward to your presentation every year. It is fabulous. Thank you.
Well, if I might, if you would share the contact information, just by connecting with the President's office, we'd be glad to reach out to the group that you've referenced. And I will also tell you that when I mentioned that the Department of Transportation Secretary Witty Jig was out here, and they gave us just under $1 million federal funding, we intend to expand the CDL program so that we can take in 500, 1,000 students. We have the capacity, we have the talent and the ability. We haven't had the capacity in terms of space, but that's something that we are moving forward on. And then I'll let Melissa reference the question about special facilities for the electric vehicle maintenance.
Right, so when I started, when we started looking at this building, I thought it would, I thought like you, I thought, well, you know, just convert the existing lifts and areas, and we can use that for electric vehicle. Well, I've come to understand that, in fact, that won't work because these electric vehicles have batteries that have, that are high voltage. There is almost double the space required to work on an electric vehicle as opposed to a gas engine vehicle in a safe way. Because obviously, you don't want anyone to be injured by that high voltage. In addition, there are some very unique air conditioning and HVAC requirements for working on an electric vehicle that can't be met in the existing space. So what we will be doing in that project is renovating the existing building and doing an addition, that the addition will be primarily focused on electric vehicles. But certainly, there will be some parts of the existing space that will be, you know, alignments and things like that. And, you know, gas engines aren't going to go away. So they will still need to be repaired. So I think that we're working hard to get every value for the dollars you invest.
Mr. Johnson?
No questions. Just want to say that I appreciate your presentation every time you come before the board, well-prepared and give us great information. And I look forward to supporting you. Please forgive any background noise you hear, I'm on the train and on my way home. But I do appreciate the presentation.
Nancy, did you have your hand back up, or is that a, okay? Any other questions? Ms. Wolfson? You're muted again.
I'm so sorry. I also had two other questions. The LED, the LEED certification. So what level are you seeking? And the other question is about the stormwater management. Is there any investment proposed for pervious surface for the parking lot?
For sure. So our LEED buildings so far have been LEED Silver. We missed LEED Gold for our Eustace Center for Health Professions at CCBC Essex. We missed it by a point. We came so close. Gold. But, so the ones that we have are LEED Silver, and that is our minimum. We work to build sustainability features into all of our facilities. Your second question on the stormwater management, what we have done on new construction at CCBC Catonsville is we've begun to use sidewalk and other items and other surfaces that permit the rainwater to go through and to percolate. And then, of course, we have some stormwater management throughout. The challenge with the Catonsville campus, and you know, having been there, is it's very high on a hill. And as that water runs off, we have culverts and other things. And so a number of our stormwater management features have gone into disrepair. And we need to fix them and get better at stormwater management. Of course, when the campus was built, nobody even thought about stormwater management. But, you know, now it's the thing that we need to do.
Thank you so much. I know you put a lot of thought and energy, and you're very conscious of the environmental impact of your campus.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is sort of projections. As I look at the demographics of Baltimore County over the next 10 years, the number of people 20 to 40, that stays flat, if not declines a little? And are you anticipating similar projections? And how will that impact what CCBC is able to do?
Well, if I might make a little effort to address what you're referring to, you know, in the collection of data about our student body that I shared, the average age, when you put everybody together, credit, non-credit, is 36. When you look at those coming to seek for a degree, it's actually more in the 20 to 25 range. You know, we pay attention to this data, but I'm not sure that we've projected our future planning based on any particular changes that we see. We're working very hard, however, to make sure that everybody who wants to come here has as much a chance to work on a short-term credential as on a degree. And one of our strategic directions actually is the blending, the more successful blending of credit and non-credit, system, support, teaching, curriculum, you know, making it possible for a person who's 80 or a person who's 20 to make a decision, I want to, I just want a certificate, I just want a degree. When the superintendent was speaking, she was talking about the fire science program, which I know we have had connection with for some time. But you know, you take a program like that, that's perfect for young man, young woman coming right out of high school, because there would be age limits on the other end of it. So I don't think we've been very thoughtful about projecting our needs in the future based on just on age. But we are undergoing the same kind of significant changes in our student body that you see almost everywhere in the workforce. A lot of our students who want to be, want to be students, but they want to do it remotely. And then, you know, that creates a whole different approach to, correct them on a whole different approach to delivery and all the things that go with it. So I think we've been more focused on addressing that kind of change within our midst than on, you know, looking, as you just pointed out, looking a decade out.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I could add, you know, I can understand after, coming after the school board, where they're very clear about compulsory education and how many children will be going to school this year and this year and this year. Let me, let me give you some assurance, though, that what we do do in order to get state funding, we actually do have to go through a projection series that is established by the Maryland Higher Education Commission, where they've done statewide projections on where they've done statewide projections on higher education. I think that they don't recognize some of the trends that Dr. Kurt Nidus pointed out, which is more of the trend toward lifelong learning and re-credentialing throughout your career. Nevertheless, unless CCBC has the sufficient enrollment to justify that building, the state will not approve it.
And then somewhat similar, I know that a challenge across the country and across the Western world has been the sort of decline of men going on to higher education. I did note in one of your slides that you had a male student program project, which I'm assuming is in part to try and address some of that, and I just was wondering if you could talk a little more about it.
Yes, the data that I shared in terms of the gender, fifty-nine percent female, and that number for probably the past two decades has been roughly in the sixty percent range. And with us, because we have such a strong health programs, that have health programs, and they serve largely, women are drawn to those professions. But the efforts that we're making along the lines of the, we call it the Male Student Success Initiative, MSSI affectionately referred to, we realized, I think probably two, three years ago, when we really studied the success rates of individual categories of students, we realized that while most of, whether they were male or female, white, African-American minority, they were largely up at this end of the continuum. The African-American male, however, was almost at a twenty-one percent. And it was both shocking and embarrassing when we realized that we haven't really identified a way to support that group. So that's what the MSSI group is, help is designed to do, to really bring men into the institution and help them stay. What was happening very often was someone walks in interested, what do you want to be? I want to be a doctor, I want to be an accountant, something like that. And very often, the student within six weeks had walked out the door and was gone, because many of our students need this sort of transitional accelerated work in this reading and mathematics to actually be successful at the college level. And what we realized was we were just assuming too much and not providing the hands-on support, really the arm around the shoulder kind of support that many of these men who come from really quite underprivileged homes and neighborhoods and communities need much more than we realized. We're very proud of this program. It's, I think, we set the goal of having five hundred students enrolled. I think going into this semester, we're at something like three hundred and ninety. We've got some very talented African-American men who are working with these students. It's not just African-Americans, it's minority, so Hispanic, Asian, African-American. But it's a program that we've now become very proud of. We've had it for years, and we just weren't paying attention. Now we are.
Thank you. Last chance, any other questions? Not seeing any. Again, I want to echo everyone else's comments. This is always one of the more fascinating presentations, and I think everyone appreciates all the work that CCBC and Dr. Kurt Nidus, you and your staff do. And we appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Well, we love to come and be acknowledged, so thank you. It's always a highlight for us, too. Anyway, thank you very much.
If there are no further comments or questions, we will adjourn. I want to thank all of the presenters for their presentations this evening. The next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Program will be Thursday, February fifteenth, following our normally scheduled board meeting to hear staff recommendations. Information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. We do, however, have a planning board meeting this coming Thursday, which I believe is virtual, starting at four fifteen, so just a reminder about that. And Taylor, someone correct me if I got that wrong.
You're correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much. Everyone, have a nice evening.